I call the meeting to order and ask that the clerk please call roll.
Mr. Jim Benage.
Here.
Mr. Jeff Elshoff.
Here.
Mr. Jeff Hawes.
Here.
Ms. Betty Martine.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
Wonderful, thank you. We do have a quorum. I want to welcome everybody to the regularly scheduled meeting of your Bel Air City Council, those in the audience and those watching at home. Tonight, we have a relatively short agenda. We're going to talk about Rock Springs Third and Rock Springs Second, looking at some paving, some petitions, sidewalk petitions. We're going to look at a zoning map update and also at a charter ordinance affecting the seating of elected members to your governing body here. It's all on our agenda this evening, but we're going to begin tonight's meeting with an opening prayer from Pastor Gary Green. Come forward, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you for having me. It's a real privilege to be with you again tonight. With your power and his with me, dear wise and loving Father, we come before you right now to thank you. On behalf of all of you gathered here tonight, thank you for your many and abundant blessings. We thank you for life itself, for the measure of health that we need to fulfill our callings, for the sustenance and for our friendships. We thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work, for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. And we give you thanks for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you and that for your loving nature, you love us either way, so boundless and gracious. Your scripture tells us that citizens ought to obey governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and honor and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor and the various levels of city officials, in particular, for this assembled council here this evening. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern among the different difficult interests and issues of our day, that we grant them a sense of the welfare and true needs of your people, grant them a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Take our community into the future. We ask for your safety from evil that's in this world. Would you grant it now, Lord, on our community? We ask these blessings in your name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Now, please rise and join us in the same pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you jump right in to our agenda? If there's any agenda additions this evening, I'll move into our consent agenda, which consists of the minutes from our August 20th, 2019 city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
A second? First, and a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item seven is discussion and approval of our appropriations ordinance 19-17. It's in the amount of $375,848.76. A little bit higher this time. That was because we did some street repairs. There's any questions on appropriation ordinance 2019-17?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I've moved to approve appropriations ordinance 19-17. All second?
First and second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Citizens requested appearances is next on our agenda, and I have two individuals who've requested to address council this evening, and we'll call them up. And the first one is Bob Graham, and the second one is Roy Figurito. Come to the podium and state your name and address and address the council.
I'm Robert Graham. I live at 4322 Country Lane, over close to Jeff, actually, just around the corner. So I get to see him play with these kids several times every day. Got a nice bunch of kids out there.
I appreciate it.
I went by there last fall, and that little girl was raking leaves. Man, if you could get some grownups to rake leaves like that, you could clean everything up.
That's true.
She was serious. I'm here to talk a little bit about sidewalk repairs going on over there, and I think I told Betty earlier, my hope was that that letter went out to generate conversations among neighbors, because it sure as heck did that. Based on the information that was sent out, without going into detail, it looks like we're stuck in paying for our own sidewalks. Unless I can buy the house across the street that doesn't have a sidewalk real quick, then I'm going to be in trouble. My first issue, and I guess maybe the most important one, is that when the gentleman came out to mark the sidewalk repairs a few weeks ago, there was a lat rainfall in, and I pulled in the driveway just as he marked mine, and so we had a brief conversation and talked about how this project looked like it was supposed to be done a year or so ago, and then nothing ever happened there. And he said he was remarking everything, and even on my, the squares on my sidewalk, he said they had been marked incorrectly before. And I've heard from several neighbors that the marks that were put on there this time are different than were put on there a year ago. So I'm not sure how you go about doing all that, but I did ask him if he knew what the price was going to be for the repairs, and he told me very clearly $200 per section. And I remember a year ago, I talked to Kevin when this first came up, and I think he told me that the last time this had been done, they, I forget what that concrete company is, PBJ or PJV or something like that, that they had charged $100 a square, and he said he was sure it would go up from that. But in my memory, I thought we were talking about $150 to $175, something like that. But he was, at that time, which was probably July, he was waiting on a quote, and I never heard back, so I assume we didn't get a quote back, or for some reason, whether that project died then. So, you know, I've got one question on the cost. I was thinking it was, you know, I jumped from $100 to $150, $175 would be acceptable. I understand prices go up. But the letter says $400, and that lit everybody in my neighborhood on fire. And so I don't know where the $400 came from. I don't know if that's just a maximum quote. It wasn't very specific in the letter. If that's the maximum amount based on certain factors, I might understand it. But I think, I think as citizens out there, we need to know how much it's going to cost before we do it, you know? I wouldn't buy a car without knowing how much it's going to cost me. So that's, that's probably my, my biggest part there is where all this came from, how it came about. And, you know, there seems to be a real sense of urgency. I talked to the manager a little bit ago, and sounded like even you agree that that's a pretty short timeframe that we were given to address this issue. I have a little different way of looking at it. To my memory, I moved in that house 26 years ago on May the 31st. To my memory, that sidewalk looks today just like it looked back then. So I'm not sure how we got 26, 27 years without anybody ever saying anything about it, and now it's just an urgent thing to get, get me to pay $400 is what it looks like. So that's, that's probably the serious part of my presentation. I do have some questions. Am I allowed, or are we allowed, to ask the people across the street to stay off on my sidewalk? Because apparently, that's my sidewalk. And can I charge people to walk on my sidewalk? And can I charge extra for dogs? The people across the street don't have a sidewalk. They don't have dog poop in their yard. I got to watch where I put my feet when I mow. It's not bad. People, people do a much better job of picking it up after their dogs, even in the last three or four years, I think. But it still happens. Well, the guys that don't have a sidewalk don't have to worry about it. So maybe I can charge extra for dogs. I don't know. I did mention to my neighbors, and these are my neighbors on the front row, I did consider painting large blue arrows on the seams that go across the street in front of my house, where the school buses jar my teeth when they go up every morning. Just put some blue arrows out there and see if those would get fixed while we're doing all this stuff. I don't know if that would work or not. I guess to boil this thing down, in my opinion, there maybe should have been a little more thought. I don't, I can't tell you how much thought. You guys know how much thought and planning went into it. But it seems like it could have taken a little more work on the front end, a little more planning, a little better notice, and in my view, a little more transparency. It's just all I want you to get a letter. Some people are looking at thousands of dollars to replace their sidewalk, and it just came out of the blue, and you got two or 30 weeks to get it fixed. And, and that's all I got. I will, I appreciate you guys' time tonight. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, council members, and Ms. Attorney. I did notice you're the only attorney here in the room. Is that okay?
Mr. Graham, thank you.
Oh, we got another one? Okay. So I'll wrap it up. I will leave my questions about barking dogs for another time.
Next, we'll bring up Roy Figurito.
Hi, everybody. Thank you very much to allow me to be here. I think Bob provided all the details, critical details. I will try to give you a little bit more of the history behind this that I had no since those sidewalks were marked last year. First, I mean, I live at 4310 Country Lane, just beside Bob's and two houses away from Paul. When I saw those marks, you know, maybe like last year, early last year, you know, we all talked about, you know, those need to be fixed. I said, yeah, I agree, yeah, they need to be fixed. I think it's, it's a danger for people walking in, and I've been trying to repair. If you look at those sidewalks, I think my sidewalk is the only one that you see repaired. I mean, I buy caulk, special caulk. I take out the blocks, small blocks, and put cement. I mean, we do that since I've been living in the house. Once I realized that nothing was done, and those marks were fading away, you know, I actually came here and talked to Keith, and I said, guys, I saw those have been marked, you know, I think they need to be fixed. I agree with that. I told him, I talked to Bob, and he told me at the time that maybe potentially $150 to $170 slab, dollars. And actually, I told Keith, look at Keith, you guys marked two of them, you know, but for that price, I'm willing to actually go ahead and, you know, have an extra three here and get them fixed. You know, I'm tired of repairing those every year, every other year. $150 to $175, you know, that was my consent. I was ready to put extra money upfront to get them repaired. At the time, the statement was, why wasn't done? Because I think he said something about the council changed and basically, you know, thinks it didn't get through completely. But there's one statement he said, it kind of kept with me, is they were scared that some of the people who may not ending up in paying the fee to repair it after it was repaired. It was kind of scary that, you know, yeah, we go do the work, but some people are not paying. I kind of kept, I kept that in my mind, and I was like, hmm, this doesn't make any sense, because, you know, you guys can force it on us to pay it, you know, once the work is done. Regardless, you know, I remember two slabs. I proposed, go ahead, do an extra three, make it five for that price, $150, even $200. And he said, okay, I will call you back later or talk to you back later. I never heard back until I saw those blue marks, and those blue marks, they went from two to five and a half. You know, I was like, okay, he kind of listened to me. You know, he kept that in the memo that I wanted to get them all repaired. And he had no issues, you know. And at the time, I wanted to get the list from your website about the construction, the concrete, where'd he go?
Benders?
Benders, yeah, that are qualified, or certified for Bel Air. You know, and I called one, and he said, and I think it was the first one, you know, he just starts from the list, there are only six, I think. I was like, Rich, I think it's called Rich Construction. I called him and asked him, you know, what would the price to get this work done, you know, for a slab? And, you know, a couple of questions, what the square area? And I told him around five by four, and he said, you know, in reality, it's like around $10 a square feet. My head was like, okay, around $200 square feet. I kind of, you know, I think I'm willing to do that. And, you know, stuck there. Then I received that letter that shows $400. You know, that to me was like, oh, you know, it's the double what the constructor guy just told me. You know, it's more than double that we told Bob last year, $150, $175. At the same time, in my head, it was like, it goes from 200 to 400. He told me last year that they're scared that some people not be paying for that work. Now I was thinking, maybe they're trying to force on other peoples, you know, by doubling the price, trying to cover themselves. In case some people did not pay, you know, the other ones, you know, correct, you know, residents would be paying for the ones not paying. And that's what's in my mind. And I don't know if that's the type of way you guys work, where you'd be charging 400, thinking, hey, if someone doesn't pay, we're not going to sue him, we're not going to spend any money, because, you know, we're getting extra money for the neighbor. I don't know how you guys work. It's just, all those things in my mind kind of, you know, came together. 200, not paying, now it's 400. It just didn't sound good, you know, as an approach. And I asked him, you know, what's the, how many bids you guys had? I'm assuming he must have at least three bids. I mean, you just don't call once, okay, what's the price? You get them into, within, since they're like six of them, they're certified for the city. All of them, any bid should be, should be good. And the lowest bid, you should be able to take the lowest bid, because they're all accepted by you guys. You have certified. And he wasn't able to tell me how many bids. He wasn't able to tell me what was the price. He said, you know, that price, it could vary, you know, it could be 400, maximum is 400. I said, you know, when you make a bid, and you get the, you know, the company signs a contract, says it can be 200 slab. It's 200 slab. You know, if you guys says under 50, it should be 150, regardless what's happened later, regardless if the cement goes up by 15 percent. You know, the contract, you sign the contract, it's, that's the price, the fixed price. And this is why I was surprised when he said he couldn't guarantee the price. You know, he couldn't tell me how many bids. It just doesn't sound good for, you know, normal business. And I said, all those, I had no answers at all from him. And the other statement I told him is, when I purchased the house 20, a couple of years ago, I remember that there was something stating on the contract says there actually was a nominators association, but there was no fees to pay for. And I asked Keith, you know, if there's a nominators association, and it's in my contract, and I need to go back, it's unsafe, I don't have time to go pull it up. But if it says on the contract when I purchased the house, says there's a nominators association, I'm assuming the price, the cost to repair should be going against every single one of those nominators associations, not just the one that lives in front of the sidewalk. That's something I'd like to ask you guys to check, is, is this true that the nominators association still exists? And if it's in my contract, I purchased the house, it's still applicable, because I never, the letter says the nominators association doesn't exist. And then, in that perspective, I think the cost should be split across every single one of the nominators association. So that's just something to check, because I, you know, this is my understanding. You know, I asked about lead time. He said, you know, the rule supposedly is five days. You know, they could make it in five days, we must have things repaired. I was like, how can be five days? I said, you know, one of your, I think it's section 11.3.5, it talks about, once you get the permit to do any repair, you're allowed to do the work within three months. That's what that section says. And now he tells me, you know, it must be done by mid of next month, or worst case, it's been five days. But how can you give a permit for three months? You know, something that doesn't look right there. And he kind of agrees with what Bob was talking about. Sorry, I know it's here. But I think, you know, I think this is all of them. Basically, you know, I, I could complain about the poop in backyard on the yard like Bob, but mine is really, they're big ones. But I'm not complaining about that. Again, what I'm here is mainly saying, you know, I was an honest citizen. I came here last year. I feel responsible for the work to accomplish. I came, I talked to him. I was willing to put extra money, you know, to get extra ones replaced. And I just feel it was unfair to come back, you know, a year later, and, you know, doubling the price from 200 to 400, you know, after they told him that was 200, after I called the contractor, and he said it was $10 a square feet. And then Keith, he told me, you know, you know already for months now that you guys shouldn't be repairing that, so you should have done that. I said, look, when I called the contractor, he told me $10 per square feet, $200 was close to 175. For me, I said, why should I worry about getting permit, get stuff done, when I can just let the city do it? See, if you guys have more people, it could be cheaper, I'm assuming, potentially. You know, and that's what I told him. Look, you know, if I hadn't known, it could be $400, yes. Last month, two months ago, when I called, I would have requested the contract come over and get it fixed. Because he told me it would take at least a month and a half before he was able to come in. That was like two or three weeks ago. He told me it was like mid of October, he was able to come in and get the work done, because we're so busy. Yeah.
Appreciate you coming forward for that. At this point, I'll open it up. If there's anyone else in the audience who would like to address council this evening, now is the time to do that.
Can I ask a question? Has there been a lot of feedback on the sidewalk right here?
We have a question from the audience about if we've received a lot of feedback. We've received a couple of emails from that, on that. So this is an issue. I appreciate you gentlemen bringing this forward. I do want to point out that the letter, and I actually have a copy of it here, of course, I just lost it. Yeah, where it actually, the, the letter says, let me hear. Yeah, the, da, 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 insured. So, yeah, we use a contractor of your choice, or the city replaces the sidewalk at your own expense. The estimate is, is up to $400 for each slab. So the $400 is worst-case scenario to me, and I'm going to look to our city attorney, she can tell me if I'm right or wrong on this. But to me, it's kind of like, you know, the, the back of a hotel room door, you know. But I'm in my hotel room, and it's $115. You look at the back, it says it can be $400. You know, there's those things that are in place to protect. But, yeah, $400 would be the highest cost if the city were to do all of that, you know, up to for that. And certainly, we encourage homeowners to, you know, use a contractor of their choice that's licensed and insured and all that good stuff with that. And certainly, the, yeah, within five days, I think that's something we can talk about here as a governing body in the future. Absolutely. That, so, all righty. Appreciate that conversation. So with that, we're going to move on to, unless there's anything else, city manager or city attorney you would like to say? Matt?
No, it's, it's something that certainly we'll look at. There were some concerns that were brought that I think we can address.
Absolutely.
So yes, we'll definitely look into this.
Appreciate it. All right, next, we're going to move into reports then, and for that, we'll start with council member Hawes.
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Benage?
No, no report, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Martine?
The only one I have is, we better all wish Mr. Lasher happy birthday tomorrow.
Oh, yes.
I would say everybody else, but it's a policy. Unless you know their birthday, you can't tell it. So anyway, happy birthday, Ty, and thanks for all the work that you do for the city.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, this evening, I was going to provide a brief report, kind of summarizing quite a few conversations that I'd had with citizens on sidewalks. But I would like to thank the folks that came tonight. I think they covered it pretty thoroughly, that, you know, the concerns there around the overall cost, you know, the surprise of receiving those letters in the mail, and the time provided to do that. I do think this should be a discussion that we have as a council at our next workshop, and I think we need to review that ordinance and make sure it's still reflective of what we think the city should do going forward. In the absence of that, I think it also might be appropriate for us this evening to pass a resolution deferring some enforcement on that until we have had a chance as a governing body to talk about it. And so I think that's something that we should consider doing tonight.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I just wanted to, I do have a report tonight. I was intending to just mention that I did attend the Chisholm Creek Utility Authority meeting on August 22nd, and that is the CCUA. We had a couple of items that we covered, and I'll just briefly mention those. We replaced the auger in the headworks at the sewage treatment plant. For those that aren't aware, the headworks is the first stage when the sewage reaches the sewage treatment plant, the first thing that is done is any solids or anything that makes it way, its way through the pipes to the plant gets separated out. So it could be wipes, things that don't break down. It could be anything from like little toys, combs. There's all kinds of amazing things that come through the sewer pipe that make it to the sewage treatment plant. Anyway, the auger started to break down, so that was something that had to be replaced. And that's something that doesn't get replaced all that often. So that was just kind of an interesting thing that we had to look at getting fixed. One of the wells, there's a number of wells that feed into the water treatment plant for where we get our water from the CCUA. There are both Bel Air wells, and there are Park City wells. I've mentioned a few before that have had repairs. They vary in cost and size depending on what breaks, but we did approve another well repair to a contractor. There was some computer services that needed to be done at the, the plant. And then also, there was electric motor controller that had to be fixed. That was also related to the headworks replacement that took place. That concludes my report from the CCUA. I did want to just mention, just because, since the issue with the sidewalks did come up already, I just wanted to mention that the first I had heard about this, the issue of the sidewalks, was actually when I was on my way to the CCUA meeting. So that's why. It's kind of on my thoughts at the moment. And as I had received a phone call from a citizen who left a voicemail earlier in the day, and I was in the process of driving from my full-time job to the CCUA meeting on August 22nd, and I decided to call that citizen to find out, to follow up on their message, because what they told me about the sidewalk repair and the cost and their heightened concern about the very small amount of time to get it repaired, I was kind of alarmed by that. That sounded, it sounded unreasonable to me, frankly. And so I talked to the citizen. They shared with me their concerns in detail. I said I'd look into it. I'm sure that we all have, because we all received at least a couple of emails from concerned citizens in addition to the gentleman that smoked this evening. And I agree with Councilman Smith, we should look at some stay on the current timeline or deadline that's out there, because it does strike me as unreasonable based on everything that I've learned since getting more information about this process and all that. So that's all I'll say about that, other than just, I hope we can have more discussion about it. And, yeah, that's all I have to say at the moment. Thank you.
Appreciate it. And I have no formal report tonight, other than I do want to thank the gentleman who came forward and encouraged, you know, other citizens. Your governing body is open, and you can come and address your concerns and ask questions. I was going to answer them right away, because we want to go back and get the answers for you. But that is the way our government works, and you are welcomed and you're thanked for coming and questioning us. The, yeah, the city of Bel Air is not unique in the fact that we have codes and that we enforce our codes that are out there. But I, and I'm glad that we have them. It protects a lot of homeowners. It protects a lot of things out there for people that live in this great community, in this great city. But we've heard a couple of council members mention that we need to look at, you know, hanging tight on enforcing. I don't, obviously, it's not on the agenda this evening, but I certainly would think that's something, we do have a workshop scheduled for next week, and I would be all for that being a topic of conversation at our workshop for that. I think we absolutely need to have some conversation on that. So with that, I'm going to move on to city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to talk to council about our noticing significance, not significant, but some uptick in the amount of DUIs showing up in Bel Air court. But before I go to that- But before I go to that, I won't give a report on sidewalks, but there are a couple of points that I would just-
Come on, everyone else is.
I would address as the public has commented on them. The sidewalks are just very generally not going into it, very high level. Sidewalk is a public right-of-way, so that, no matter who's responsible for maintaining it, a sidewalk is a space for the public to walk through, much like a utility easement that is hidden by grass, or a nice landscape, some nice landscaping, that is a utility easement, and the owners of the utility placed there may always come onto that property to access that easement. The same with a sidewalk, except it is truly for the public. The Bel Air code is rooted in the state statute, so the state statute requires a homeowner to maintain the sidewalk in front of the homeowner's home. Of course, procedurally, as Mayor said, there are plenty of ways to approach that, and as Mayor said, it would be something for a workshop, but the basis of the code is from the state statute requiring homeowners to maintain sidewalks, as they are a public right-of-way. So, that's just a brief overview on that, that may address the gentleman's question about if he could prevent a person from walking, even though, the question wasn't just, I understand that, but he could prevent someone from walking, sorry.
I'm going to real soon.
So, that's all I would say. As to my report on DUIs, we've noticed that they've gone up a little bit. Just want to remind residents DUIs can be extremely costly to freedoms and finances. A DUI is driving under the influence of illegal, driving under an influence of something, whether that's an illegal prescription drug, or alcohol, or a legal drug that has been prescribed to a person. That influence would have caused that, caused the person to be incapable of safely operating a vehicle. There are tests that officers do that are tried and essentially true across the country that test whether someone is incapable of operating a vehicle. And just to remind everybody, the penalties for a first DUI can be as high as $800 in fines, there is always some jail time, even if it's a few hours. Diversion may be an option for a first DUI, but it is costly. And the person is also subjected to a driver's license hearing through the Kansas Department of Revenue, and at that hearing, a person's license may be suspended for a period of time. And, and under that suspension or restriction, the person may be required to have an intoxicator machine in their vehicle, which is also costly, that's a machine that people would have to rent. A second DUI, whether that first one was diverted as, you know, a first mistake, that second one is always treated as a higher, a higher crime, and the penalty from that ranges from fines of 1,250 dollars to 1,750 dollars, and at least five days jail. Insurance premiums usually dramatically increase upon a second DUI. So, and a third DUI may be charged as a felony, and sometimes the Bel Air prosecutor uses the discretion to charge that third one as a felony, just because of the danger circumstances, and sometimes risk to the community. So, what residents can do, obviously, some of the violations we're seeing are people who've taken medication that they've not taken before, they didn't know how they would react to it, so don't take medication you're not familiar with before you have to drive. And always follow the instructions and dosages on the prescription. Anyone out drinking should have a plan. If someone's alcohol level is above .08, or a person under 21 has an even lower threshold, sometimes it's only one glass of some sort of alcohol, that person may be charged with a DUI. And again, Mr. Mayor, just because of the time off of work, the adjudication, the embarrassment, and the time spent in treatment, DUIs can be costly, and I would just remind people of that. Thank you, that's all I have.
Well, that's a great reminder, now we just kind of come off the summer season, but it won't be long before we're talking about holiday parties, New Year's Eve parties, or taxi, or whatever. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention for the public's sake, I know council saw this in their last packet, but the city received the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Award for our 2019 budget, and that's something that I think we've received for the last five years, so I wanted to give a big thank you to Ted Henry for his work on the budget, and there are specific things that he has to do to our budget to receive that award, and it's judged by finance officers across the United States. So, I think that's a great thing for our city and for our citizens to be aware that our budgets are done in a way that it would receive a distinguished budget award, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Congratulations again to the new dad. Alright, next, we want to move into ordinances, resolutions, and final actions. This was put on the agenda before the public comment tonight, we're going to talk about sidewalks. The developer's ready to move forward with the public infrastructure, we're talking about the third edition over there in Rock Spring. He submitted petitions for the installation of water sewer paving and for sidewalks. I want to remind everybody, as with all the projects like this, the cost of these projects are going to be paid via the special assessments on the lots that benefit from the improvement. So, that is before us this evening.
So, Mr. Mayor, this might be a great time to, since we've been talking about sidewalks, this is actually how sidewalks get started. So, when a, the city codes do require on certain main thoroughfares that sidewalks be on both sides, because if it's difficult to cross the road without crosswalks and lighting, then you have sidewalks on both sides. For example, Central Park, when you're coming into City Hall, it's on both sides. And then in neighborhoods, then a lot of times it'll be on one side, and then cul-de-sacs, you usually don't have them, because there isn't a lot of traffic, it's just typically just the homeowners that live there. So, when the subdivision is platted, in this case, so the roads are platted out how they're going to be, where the water sewer goes, and then sidewalks. So, this, in this case, you can see there's some cul-de-sacs, and those won't have sidewalks, but there'll be a main sidewalk along, I believe it's Tobin Drive, and the idea is to meet up with other sidewalks in the area and other subdivisions. So, the developer petitions to have all that installed, and the cost of the water sewer paving, sidewalk, and are assessed to each lot owner. So, when the original sidewalks go in, every lot owner has to pay a portion of that sidewalk. Now, once the sidewalk goes in, as our city attorney stated, then the actual maintenance and repair is up to the property owner that it lays on, but for the initial installation, all the property owners pay a portion of that sidewalk. And so, as you mentioned, the developer's ready to move forward, the city, petitions for the city to install those, the city issues bonds, borrows the money, gets the bids, and installs the, the infrastructure. And then, after three years, there's a temp note, and we roll that into a general obligation bond, and then each property owner is special assessed for all these improvements. So.
Mr. Mayor. Okay. Let's start with Councilor Smith, and we're going to go down that way.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to say that, you know, there's no doubt in my mind that sidewalks are good for our community, and they're necessary in the neighborhoods, and I'm really glad that we have them, because my wife and I, we walk on our neighborhood sidewalks all the time. I do think it's interesting that when they're initially installed, the whole area pays for them, similar to how the whole area pays for the streets. The difference is, once the streets need maintained, it's the city's responsibility, and currently, the way that things are set up now, once the sidewalks need maintained, it's an individual homeowner's responsibility, and so I think that'll be a great topic for our workshop, but I am in favor of sidewalks.
Mr. Martin?
Well, my question was on sidewalks. After these people sell the homes, do they tell, or the realtors, do we ask them to tell them that the property owner is responsible for the sidewalks after they go off of the specials? Because that was the main calls that I got, is, well, when I bought this house, nobody told me I was responsible. And in a lot of cities, like I think there was a Johnson County one, that Johnson County repairs theirs, well, Johnson County has more money, we do, I understand, but I think it should be also in our workshop that when we start talking about these sidewalks, that these realtors that come into Bel Air make sure when these people buy these houses, that they're told up ahead, when the specials go off, you're responsible for them. That's all I had, Mayor.
Councilor Benage?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was just a oversight or typo that we're talking about, resolution for Elk Creek Third Water, and it's not Elk Creek, it's-
Oh, no.
Rock Spring Third.
Yeah. Okay, I just want to make sure that we were on the same page, I didn't miss something here.
No.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to accept the paving, water, sewer, and sidewalk petitions for Rock Spring's third edition.
Second. First, two seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item B is a resolution determining the advisability of making the water sewer paving and sidewalk improvements in Rock Spring, second. We just talked about Rock Spring, third. The financing piece of public infrastructure is accomplished through temp notes and through GO bonds. This process requires a resolution for each improvement be approved by the city council. And I'll answer the question now, yes, each resolution requires its own action, I think we go through that a lot, but, so this is kind of part of that legalese that we need to do here for, yeah, B, C, D, E.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution determining the advisability of making certain internal improvements in the city of Bel Air, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in the court, with such finding paving improvements, Rock Spring, third edition, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Go ahead.
I motion to approve a resolution determining the advisability of making of certain internal improvements in the city of Bel Air, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, sanitary sewer improvements, Rock Spring, third edition, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. First and second, questions or comments on item C? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item D?
Mr. Mayor? I motion to approve a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements in the city of Bel Air, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, sidewalks improvements, Rock Spring, third edition, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. First and second, questions or comments on item D? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, last one is item E.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hawes.
I move to approve a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements in the city of Bel Air, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, water distribution system improvements, Rock Spring, third edition, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, did you say that all in one breath? That was impressive. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passing, okay. Kevin, thanks for being here for that, but we're going to move on to item F now, which is zoning map update. There's been a number of zoning changes over the past three years, and staff felt it was time to update the zoning map from 2016 to 2019. We did have public notice that was given, and the planning commission reviewed the changes at their meeting last month. The map was approved by the planning commission and now comes before the city council for final adoption.
Mr. Mayor, I have a concern with this, because it includes Lot 19 of the portion across from the Bel Air City Hall, and that is the Silver Cottage property, which there's contract with Silver Cottage to sell. That, as I've stated before, is a contract very expensive for Bel Air, it is worse than a buyer sale, the cost to the city is over a million dollars, and traffic count of 3,200 vehicles per day in that area is insufficient for support retail development. It'll take over 30 years for this traffic count to equal the Woodline of 45th, traffic counting today on a static 3% growth model, those are horrible growth models, but that's what that would do. The best-case revenue scenario of a $5 million assessed value investment of that property would take 30-plus years to return tax revenues to pay for that, that $1 million investment that the city's required to do. If we could get a $15 million assessed value investment on the 20 acres there, that payback in tax revenues would take about 10 years. That would probably be a decent deal to do, but the way that contract is right now, this is very expensive, so I'm going to oppose the zoning change because of the 19, not because of anything else on that, on that map, but because of item 19.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question for the staff, and it is on the item 22, rezoning of Lot 19 to R6. When we did the contract with Silver Cottage to sell them that parcel, I remember our contract explicitly stated that we were selling them a commercially zoned piece of land, and I know that when I looked at the economics of selling it to them and the impact of them building a facility there and paying taxes on it, that I was thinking about that as a commercially zoned property tax, as a commercial business establishment rate instead of a residential rate. And so, I'm unclear, based on the information that we have, how changing this to an R6 zoning might impact the tax basis of the property, and how that might impact the economics of our land sale that we've already entered into contract on.
That's one thing I'll have to check into, to see if this multifamily is a true residential, or is, if it's still considered a commercial, because that's what I'm not sure about, because it's, the zoning is for multifamily, which allows for the one unit to have eight separate rooms in it, but I'm not sure, because it's owned and operated as a business, if it counts as commercial or not, so I'll check into that to see which the, which zoning, or which tax status it would be.
Mr. Mayor, the only other thing I might add is I did attend the planning commission meeting, where they talked about this item extensively, and it did pass, but it passed with a 4-2 vote, and I know we don't have the meeting minutes from that planning commission meeting in front of us, and so the governing body may want to consider tabling this item until we've had time to get an answer on the tax basis for the lot, and until we have the meeting minutes to review that full discussion.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
I'll make a motion to table an ordinance concerning the amendment of Chapter 18 of the city code of Bel Air, Kansas, in connection with the zoning map, all within the city of Bel Air, Central County, Kansas, as presented.
I'll second.
So, we have a motion to table this. I just want to ask, is this going to further push back, and we have a commercial sale here, that, I just want to make sure it's not going to be jeopardy if we postpone this anymore, we've already kind of done that before.
As long, the land bank is meeting after this, and that, the land bank consideration is to move the closing to November 1st, so if that gets approved, then this, this wouldn't affect that.
Yeah, that'd be my main concern, I mean, this is something where, I mean, you bring up questions and say, it's going to take all this time because the traffic count's on there, well, we're trying to do something to get that, to fix that, to improve that, and that's where, you've got to take outside the box and do something different. You know, is it a cheesecake factory coming across it that everybody wants? No. But it's something, and it gets something going, and that's the real excitement here for the city, that we need to be looking at, and I'm glad that we've moved it as forward as much as we have with this. I think Councilmember Smith brings up a good point about, you know, taxes, we want to make sure that's accurate. I'm, because right now, we're not making one penny in taxes on that land, so I'm looking forward to the day that it starts returning some on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, Mr. Hawes?
I am, I am also for actually tabling it, just because-
I am also for actually tabling it, just because, you know, if it is, if it does need to be zoned commercial, I think, you know, I don't think we should zone it, you know, approve the zoning for the residential if it does need to be, and then we'll have to come back and rezone it anyway, so, you know, I think if Mr. Lasher could give us that information, I appreciate that, and I think, yeah, setting this up for the next meeting would be prudent.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add that the spirit of my motion is really just in making sure we have all of the information before we make a decision. Seeing to answer that question and just really understanding all the discussion that happened in the planning commission meeting, I think we just need to be fully informed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Well, Mr. Lasher, wasn't these five or six, 10 homes in front of this doctor's office gonna be senior housing?
So this, the Silver Cottage is, yes, they're senior housing, yes.
Okay, so I will recommend that you guys over there at Catholic Care, we have those homes over there, and they're zoned residential because seniors are living in there. And you need to think about it, because now the hospital and the Catholic Care part, that's commercial. But it's gonna, you're either gonna have to go to a split lot, or you're gonna have to take the residential zoning there to get this doctor to come in. You might think about that.
Mr. Mayor?
Let's go to Councilmember Elsaw.
Thank you. I did have a couple of questions, so my first question kind of dovetails with what Councilmember Smith asked, and I think Mr. Lasher's answer potentially answers my question, but I wanted to state my question nonetheless because it's somewhat indirectly different. And that was, I did notice as well that the zoning was gonna be changing from commercial to residential, and I was double checking on the map where we have our apartments. All our apartments are commercial zoned, and so I was curious what makes, now, my understanding was this property was gonna be for a long-term therapy, not necessarily senior living.
Correct.
That was kind of my second question, is it wasn't, I didn't think it was senior living, I thought it was physical therapy, recovery, living, which is not senior living as I understand it, and that would be, that's kind of a secondary part of my question, I guess. Is it, I was expecting this to be maintained as a commercial property as well, and it wasn't clear to me why we were changing to the residential zone. So I agree with the sentiment to table this issue because I feel like I need clarification on that detail. I'm also sensitive to the issue of delaying this process, so whatever we can do to make that as quickly as possible, and I'm also in favor of, that's all I had.
I appreciate your comments, and getting the sense up here, and I think we're all kind of in agreement that this is something that, you know, what happens, we want to make sure that we have all that information right, so as long as, you know, city manager is sure that this is not going to delay, you know, last thing we want is to get this closed for the first time in 12 years, to actually have a commercial sale and then to lose it. But at the same time, we gotta make sure this is right, so I appreciate the motion. Right now, there is a motion on the floor to table. Are there any other questions or comments before I call for the roll call vote on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just make sure there's a distinction between the tax status that will be defined, whether it's taxed as residential or commercial? That's the question that's out there that we will get back to you on. The mixed, the zoning is the most appropriate zoning for a mixed-use area. That includes some residential, commercial, which fits within what that entire Lot 19 was visioned to be by council prior. So the zoning issue, it's, I think Councilmember Benage asked, you know, this was expected to be commercial. The most appropriate zoning for people staying longer than, I believe, 60 days at any property is the R6. That doesn't change the mixed-use nature of the entire area. So I wanted to make sure that was out there, that they're two different, the tax status and then the truest zone are two different issues.
That's what I tried to say, but couldn't say it.
I appreciate that clarification, it sounds like we have a topic big number two for our workshop, that's.
So we need clarification that this really is the right zoning for the purpose, and then what is the tax status of this?
Well, those still have to pay taxes on that, the houses.
I understand that, but back to Councilmember Smith's question is, is it a residential rate or is it a commercial rate?
Senior housing, it'd be residential. His office is commercial.
Right, I think your question, what's the best zone and what's the right tax status?
Right.
Is exactly what you have to answer.
Exactly, yes, thank you.
So since this is an ordinance, but the motion is to table, still need to go through the roll call, though, right? It's not, that doesn't change that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Benage?
In favor of tabling? Any question?
I don't know how I should say that.
Aye. Aye, okay. Councilmember Elsaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Hawes?
Aye.
Councilmember Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
And I also vote affirmative for that, and we'll look forward to getting that information at our workshop. Move on to item G, which is consideration of a charter ordinance exempting the city of Bel Air, this is from a state statute 25-2120, and amending the section related terms of the elected officials. The Kansas legislature made changes to the city elections last year, that being that municipal elections were moved to November, and elected officials would take their seats the second Monday of January. In 2019, the statute was changed to allow cities the ability to set when elected officials can take their seat. Now, which is so kind of them, but, sorry. At our last workshop, the governing body discussed having the swearing-in date be moved from January to the first meeting in December, and this allows time for the election to occur and ballots canvassed. And I know we did talk about that quite a bit at our workshop as well, so. Any questions or comments?
Question for the city attorney. I know we got an updated copy of that ordinance right before the meeting. Could you please talk a little bit about exactly what changed from the prior version on our packet?
Yes, sir. Actually, the version, the subject of this charter ordinance change is to Section 2, which addresses the term limits, or I'm sorry, the start date of new governing bodies, new governing body members taking seat. Everything else in Ordinance 17 was appropriate and valuable. So in the first version, I updated the term, taking that term to the first meeting in December, at some point in the first meeting in December, and I kept everything else. So it was more appropriate, just legalese-wise, from an amendment to just changing the one section. So Charter Ordinance 20, to answer your question, I've kind of gone around and around. Charter Ordinance 20, the only change between that, the first draft and the second draft, is that the, everything else, the other sections are all removed from the version you have. So if you want to look at wards or the mayor terms or vacancies, you'll go to Charter Ordinance 17. If you want to look at the start date, you'll go to Charter Ordinance 20. That's the difference. I didn't explain that very clearly, but I can give you more if you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Give a question.
I did, well, I guess just a point of clarification, did we specify the exact date change? I mean, the wording of the motion doesn't mention it specifically.
Be the first meeting in December.
Aye.
Right, okay.
The ordinance does, it's Section 2.
I know the ordinance does, I said, no, if we stated it, just, because we're gonna pass the ordinance with language that doesn't specify it, and I wanted to make sure that we mentioned roughly the date was, yeah, first week in December. Okay, that's good. All right, that's all I got, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a charter ordinance exempting the city of Bel Air from KSA 25-2120, and amending Section 2 related to terms of elected officials of Charter Ordinance 17 of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and providing substitute and additional provisions for the same as presented, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Quick question, are, the motion on our agenda says Charter Ordinance 17, but I have Charter Ordinance 20 in front of me.
That's correct.
I'm confused.
So this motion is to amend Section 2 of Charter Ordinance 17. So Charter Ordinance 20 acts to amend Section 2 of Charter Ordinance 17.
It's like adding an amendment.
Okay.
And that's all it does. So that actually helped me crystallize my answer even better, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before, again, with this being an ordinance when we call for roll call vote? Councilmember Benage?
Aye.
Councilmember Elsaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Hawes?
Aye.
Councilmember Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
I also vote the affirmative, so it passes. So discussions and future issues, sounds like.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I was just gonna say, as part of our discussion, I mentioned in my report that I'd like us to consider a stay on our sidewalks, and so I wanted to make a motion to add an item to our agenda tonight to consider a resolution to temporarily suspend enforcement action identified in the city sidewalk enforcement letters until further notice of by approved motion of the governing body.
Second.
Okay, hold up, okay. Yeah, I know.
So first, I'm making a motion to add that as an item to our agenda to talk about.
Okay, I just, I was finally curious.
What's your agenda?
Because that was back in Section 5, at the beginning of the meeting, when we were gonna add agenda items. So we, can we even do that at the end of the meeting?
You can.
Because we had that opportunity, that's what I asked at that time, I'm not trying to follow in the procedure.
I thought we were gonna talk about it at the workshop first.
I think his intent, Mr. Mayor, is to add this to the workshop agenda.
No, my intent is to add it to the agenda for tonight.
To add this resolution to the agenda for tonight, okay.
Well, and that's my question, can we even legally do that without it being on here since we've already passed the time where we were able to make additions to the agenda?
The addition should most properly come at determined agenda additions, but, Mr. Mayor, it's up to you. I would say, it's up to you. It's not, it's not the most egregious agenda violation, but it's up to you.
I think we should talk about it at the workshop first before we put it on the, and then you can ask him to put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Please.
I perceive this item that Councilmember Smith is adding is merely a stay on the deadline that is looming over our residents right now, which to my knowledge is September 20, or September 19, if I recall. And this motion is merely to stay that deadline. The issue of what we're gonna, however our discussion will go on the sidewalks is not the topic. It is merely a stay on the deadline. I would be in favor of such an addition, but it will not be a discussion about comprehensively how we're gonna handle sidewalk issues going forward, just merely a stay on the deadline.
Mr. Mayor, that is my intent.
And I understand that. My concern is we have an agenda item being asked here at the very end of the meeting, basically saying that we're not gonna enforce codes. That's a big concern to me, because if we're all of a sudden not gonna be enforcing any of our codes, I mean, can we even, are we legally even able to say, pick and choose that enforce this code but not that code? I mean, that's, that's where I'm getting, that's my concern right now. Can we even say legally, just don't enforce the sidewalk code until we have a chance to talk about? Because that, to me, is kind of what I'm hearing.
May I make a comment, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Maybe we are not saying don't enforce, we're saying we'd like to change the, what the, I guess, either change the code or at least, this is a big topic right now. So I think it, this is, this rises to the level of, I think a lot of residents are looking at us to respond. They're looking at their bank accounts, looking at the calendar, thinking, oh my gosh, if two weeks I don't get the sidewalk repaired, what's gonna happen? The city's gonna send me some outrageous bill. That's what's happening right now. This is an attempt to alleviate that, to the, we have a multitude of citizens that.
I understand that, and I'm completely sympathetic, and I would like if we could do that. I'm trying to find out if we legally can say that we can pick and choose which codes we're going to enforce.
Just fair enough.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Can I please have our city attorney respond to that?
Can you legally decide which aspects of the code you can enforce? Yes, comma, there has to be certain procedures that happen. So you could change the code and not enforce X, Y, Z. You could do this, you, I mean, you could, I believe, you could use your power to withhold enforcement for a restricted period of time for a reason. That is something you want to think about carefully when you do that.
Right.
Because then when you, as you said, Mr. Mayor, when you do it for one thing, if somebody doesn't like it, it can be looked on, frowned upon by the AG's office for using the power for certain people or giving certain favors. So that's something you want to think about. But procedurally, the best way to change enforcement is through workshops and code revisions and amendments, et cetera, so.
And that's where I thought we were, and that's my big concern, is I don't want to get on that slippery slope and all of a sudden we have a resident who is trying to sell their house, and their neighbor next door decides not to mow their lawn, and it's a foot high. You know, I mean, we, codes are there for a reason. We've heard from citizens, we've heard consensus up here that we all need to address, and we need to discuss, and we need to look at this, so none of us, I think, are trying to shirk away our responsibility of that. But just to pick and choose arbitrarily at the end of the meeting, all of a sudden say we're not going to enforce something, I'm gonna look to our city manager. Seems like now we're looking at, because we're all being put on the spot here, that there's a timeline, a time crunch, that we have certain residents who have, and this is again for, to give some context here, that have received letters stating that they need to comply, things can be fixed by September 21, is it, Councilmember Elsaw?
Thought it was 19.
19, which, I mean, if we were to have a workshop on the 10, yeah, that doesn't allow a lot of time for that, but basically, gee.
Mr. Mayor, that's the old rush now behind my desire to make that motion was, due to the tight timeline, it makes sense to me for us to temporarily postpone, and maybe I should have made that motion earlier, it was my understanding from talking with Jackie that I could do it at this point in the meeting, and so I thought it would be more appropriate to do that, but I may have misunderstood.
And I may have misunderstood your question as well, so we can discuss.
And I don't question the rush, I think it's something we absolutely need to look at. I'm looking at that, oh my gosh, I don't want to get on that slippery slope like what you discussed. You want to talk about double-edged sword here, where, because we want to do right by our residents, but at the same time, we don't want to get caught up in that catch 22, so.
Okay. I would make the suggestion that we would ask staff to ask the person that sent those letters out, whenever she sent them out or he sent them out, tomorrow, if they, you would look at the letter she sends or he sends and state that we are giving a notice that we're gonna look at this, excuse me, we're gonna look at this at a workshop and probably have it taken care of at the next council meeting until further notice not to do anything with their sidewalks at the present time. Now, that would be better than trying to add, I appreciate Mr. Smith's motion, but adding it at the end of the meeting, I'm afraid we're gonna get all kinds of slack from that, but I don't know.
Mr. Mayor? For Mr. Lasher, what, on that September 19 deadline, is that deadline, like, the deadline to have it fixed and repaired? Or does, does having, say, a signed bid and contract, knowing that the timeline is crushed and the, you know, obviously the way the contractors work, it's never immediate at that point? Is that constitute complying by the deadline anyway?
Yeah, I think that's a concern. I didn't see the letter before it went out, and typically, we like to give citizens, you know, at least 30 days or something like that to do things, so. Okay, thanks.
Well, is it having a signed and contracted? Is that...
Yeah, so that's something that... It does talk about, "Please respond within 10 days." And then... So let me... so, "Please respond within 10 days." Or inform the city of your decision. You have 30 days to have the repairs made. If the repairs are not made, the city contract will begin around September 19th. It says around. So I think then, as I think what Ms. Martine's saying is that... And I think we're talking about 20 letters roughly that went out, something like that. It's not like 100 or anything like that, so...
So there isn't a hard firm date?
Right, and I think that we could, unless Jackie feels differently, I think that I, as Ms. Martine's saying, I think I could instruct our staff to maybe send out a letter to those 20 or so that got it and say, you know, "Council's brought up some concerns. They want to look at this. The date says September 20 or September 19th. We'd like to maybe do some more research on this and get back with you on a time and a cost." Because I can see the question about the estimate is 400. And of course, as one of the gentlemen stated that, you know, if we, the city, know that we have 20 land... or 20 property owners that want us to get bids on 200 slabs, then we may be able to get it for 125 a slab. So... but if there's only five slabs that the city has to do, then it could be $200 a slab or something. So we could actually call around and get some prices that maybe we could give a better dollar amount than not exceed the 400. Maybe we could come back with, you know, we know it's going to be, if we do somewhere between 20 and 100 slab, it's gonna be 200 or 175 or something, and give a closer number and then a better timeframe as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Hold on. See, I may suggest that we maybe look at a brief executive session before moving forward, I think.
Do we have a motion on the table?
We do have a motion on the table.
And a second.
And a second, so we gotta... okay.
Unless you were able to get a substitute motion, you would want to address that motion completely or the four.
And right now, the motion is to not enforce codes?
It's to add the item to the agenda to talk... to discuss temporarily suspending enforcement action.
Take it for a vote. I want to vote for it.
Mr. Mayor, I may... I think Ms. Councilwoman Martine's idea is a good idea. The city attorney agrees that that's not an action that would exercise a stay on enforcement, but I don't know what that would be. I'd be in favor. I thought sending out a letter, a follow-up letter, is a good idea to... I'd be in favor of that in lieu of this motion that Councilmember Smith presented.
So right now, we do have a motion on the floor unless either Councilmember Benage or Councilmember Smith are willing to rescind that motion, we need to call for a vote.
Right, or Councilmember Elsaf is proposing a substitute motion to have that... Mr. Mayor, I will say that using Ms. Martine's suggestion, it's using a different route. It's using the discretion of the city manager and staff to react to the situation, which is also an option.
But it sounds like that may solve our...
Rather than imposing it from the bench. It's another way to temporarily affect what's going on.
So let me try to understand what... Mr. Lasher, what would the essence of your letter say to these citizens if we were going to the letter out? Not asking you to draft the letter, just tell us basically what you would say.
Right, so I think from what we're all hearing tonight and some of the emails you've got, the concerns are is the timeframe and the dollar amount. It seems like those are the big questions that people have. And so I think that what the letter that I would like to draft would simply go to the property owners and state that, you know, "We understand that there's some concerns about the previous letter. Council would like to further discuss the issue, and we would like to get some additional or maybe some closer cost estimates and allow more time to get repairs done." And so then we would follow up with that after you've had your workshop and you're comfortable with the route we're going. Then we could follow up with, okay, this is after council's discussion, the cost and the cost of estimates we received. It looks like the cost for each slab may be not less than or no more than $200 or closer than 400, because I can see how that would be a concern. Even though the estimates may come in at 200, the doubling the estimate or the cost is quite a bit. And then to allow time, because it is true that this time of year, it's the good time to do the repairs, but contractors are typically busy, so they may not be able to get to it, whether we contracted or the individual contracted within a month. And so it might be wise to give, you know, a little longer time. Because when we talk, when we call the contractors to get the closer estimate, they should be able to tell us that they're 30 days out or six weeks out or something.
My biggest concern here is that we put the citizens in an untenable situation, and we need to... We gotta resolve that now. I'll withdraw my motion if we're gonna send the letter, or my second to the motion if we're gonna send the letter to that effect, okay?
Mr. Mayor, I'd also be in favor of withdrawing my motion if we have a commitment to send the letter, and we expect to be able to do that within the next day or two.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Well, the reason I suggested the letter is because I personally feel... I can't bring up old shoes here, but we've got to stand behind our staff. And she or he was doing the job according to the ordinances or the resolutions or policies. So I definitely don't want them to feel they did something wrong because they're following what they should have. But also, I still think it's a good idea to send the letter and apologize to the people that say we will get back. Maybe you don't have to apologize to them because it's their responsibility to do the sidewalks. That's why I don't have one in front of my house, and I don't want one.
So right now, the motion has been removed. The motion has been removed for that. Obviously, something we need to talk about. Like I said, I'm not comfortable saying that we get rid of codes for two weeks or whatever, but I like the idea that we work with our homeowner. I am going to suggest that I'm going to ask that a member make a motion for an executive session for 10 minutes for attorney-client.
For what?
To discuss this.
I would ask for that executive session, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of sidewalks pursuant to case 8754319, exception for attorney-client privilege, and to invite the city manager and city attorney. The meeting will be for a period of 10 minutes. The opening meeting will resume in City Council chambers at 8:28.
Mr. Mayor, question for the city attorney on the motion. Is that an approved reason to go into executive session?
Yes, for attorney-client advice, for legal advice.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, it's not clear to me why we're entering executive session. I do not believe I'll be voting in favor of it.
We're talking about all of a sudden, you know, just sending out letters, enforcing codes, not enforcing codes here at the end of the meeting. I think we need an executive session, so we go back there and talk about it for a few minutes, especially with our city attorney, which is why I asked for the motion. We do have a first. Is there a second?
I'll second it since our city attorney's asked for an executive session.
Call and pay for say aye.
Aye.
No?
Aye.
Motion passes. We will resume at 8:29. Okay. Council just had an executive session, nobody next was taken. We're gonna go ahead and call it back to order. The left to discuss tonight is a discussion of future issues. We obviously have sidewalks and the codes surrounding that. Zone and tax clarification on the zone map changes.